I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of April 8th, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Seven present.
All right. Then moving on to agenda item B, pledge of allegiance. Can we have Captain Hy-Vee lead us in the pledge, please? And real quick, hang on with the shuttle. Yeah, if everyone could rise and do the pledge of allegiance, that'd be great.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what you stand as, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you there, Captain Hy-Vee. All right. Then agenda item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda, but modify to remove ordinance or under ordinances, K2, ordinance 2024-014 from the agenda. So I would take a motion to approve a modified agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
All right. The agenda has been approved as modified. Moving on, agenda item D, presentations. This is really exciting. I had the honor of introducing a lot of the IESA wrestlers and the parents and everything. The event you all were at, that was incredibly cool. I think it was electrifying just being in the audience and seeing all the activity going on. But I wanted to make sure we recognize the ISA state wrestlers. DeKalb's middle school wrestlers had a very successful season, and a number of them placed well in state tournament on the March 8th and 9th. The team surpassed the threshold of 1,000 dual-team wins this year and finished with a 27-3 record. Is that right? It's a pretty good 27-3 record. Twenty-seven young wrestlers qualified for sectional tournament, and 17 wrestlers, including three females, went to the state tournament. The DeKalb wrestlers, their weight groups, and their final placing are in the council agenda. But what I would love is, could all of you come forward? I'm gonna bring the mic, and I'd like you just to introduce yourself, your weight class, and if you placed. Can we handle that? All right, I'm coming down. There we go. All right, yeah, face the audience. Awesome. I'm gonna start on the far left.
That's great.
You have the honor of kicking us off. So name, if you placed, and what your weight is. That would be phenomenal.
Darius Russell. No. 1D5.
Jaden Coleman. I placed 6 and wrestled at heavyweight.
Brandon McCarter. I placed 6 and I wrestle at 112.
Isabella Shell. 112.
Kara Zimmerman. No. And 126.
Preston Shell. Second. 135.
Hayes Hallstead. Did not place. 119.
Matthew Frickman. Did not place. 95.
Maury Johnson. Did not place. 215.
Parker Weller. 85.
Jaden Gianoni. 75. 6.
Owen Burgess. 105.
Julian Hernandez. I placed 3rd and wrestled at 100.
Larissa Gomez-Gavara. Placed 4th. A 108.
Jacob Martin. No place. 90 pounds.
Lucas Moncrief. 215.
Noah Simonson. 90 pounds.
No. Round of applause. Now, real quick. Some of you said no place, and you made it sound like no place. Your record was 27-3. Every one of you qualified to be in the IESA wrestling tournament, which is incredible. You should all be incredibly proud of that particular achievement. I know all of us are, absolutely. I'm a Clinton Rosette middle school graduate, so I'm a DHS grad. I'm proud that you future Barb's going to DHS are gonna represent the wrestling program incredibly well. So just wanna say congratulations. I wanna say thanks for coming out. And would you all mind if council came down? Could we get a picture with all of you? It'd be my honor if we could do that. Yeah? All right. Scott, how should we?
Oops. Oh, sorry.
Yeah? Oh, what do you got?
State champion medal.
And that's from the wrestling club. So what we were just presented with, the city of DeKalb was just presented and said, "Thank you for all your generous support of DeKalb Wrestling. You have encouraged pride and tradition that has been instilled in DeKalb since 1954. With gratitude, the DeKalb Wrestling Club." Thanks. That's really cool of you all. Appreciate that. All right, we got all the council here? All right. Hey, whoa, coaches. Whoa, yeah, yeah, coaches, come on. All the coaches gotta get in here. All right, ladies, gentlemen, thanks for coming out tonight. Parents, thanks for coming out. Coaches, y'all should be absolutely proud. So have a great night, y'all.
Good job, guys.
All right. All right, moving on to agenda item D2. We have a proclamation. So it's a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt dispatch of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life, preservation of property, and public safety. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by public safety telecommunicators of the City of DeKalb Emergency Communications Center. And whereas telecommunicators are the single vital communication link among our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas telecommunicators of the City of DeKalb have contributed daily to the effective public safety response, the apprehension of criminals, the suppression of fires, and the treatment of patients. Whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, care, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties. And whereas the week of April 14th through 20th, 2024, has been designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week by the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, APOC, and recognized nationally by proclamation of the United States Congress. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby declare recognition and celebration of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week from April 14th through April 20th, 2024, in the City of DeKalb. Let's give our telecommunicators a round of applause. All right, I think I have some of you here. So council, if you wanna come down, let's give 'em a nice photo shot or photo. Steve? Hopefully they'll photoshop a little for this one. That would be great.
Fly over the back room.
Yeah. You guys get in the middle first.
Steve's coming down, too.
All right, good. All right, one more round of applause. All right, then moving on to, where they got that? Agenda item E, public participation. I think we have Ms. Martinez here, and, yes, Ms. Martinez, please. And as a reminder, you have three minutes for your public comment.
Ever since I was, ever since I for the first time spoke at the February 12th, 2024 DeKalb City Council meeting, and to date, the minutes have never documented that I clearly, for instance, said that I am a victim of intimidation and a witness of intimidation, and that I said I am Hispanic and be denied independent and criminal investigations. Despite the fact the City of DeKalb and the city council are aware, I and my brother reported official misconduct, discrimination involving, for instance, DeKalb City Manager Bill Nicholas. And despite the fact there is precedent that city managers have been investigated before. Instead, the City of DeKalb and the city council has been dissuading and intimidating me, a victim and a witness of intimidation, for publicly coming forward. For instance, at the first city council meeting I attended, the following occurred. One, to defend DeKalb City Manager Bill Nicholas, Alderman Scott McAdams publicly targeted and attacked me, a victim and a witness. Alderman McAdams can no longer stand in the way of my efforts to hold, for instance, Bill Nicholas accountable, since after using racial slurs, Alderman McAdams resigned. Two, with City of DeKalb Chief of Police David Byrd being present, Bill Nicholas was allowed to target, attack, and further retaliate, intimidate, and dissuade me, a victim and witness, for publicly reporting his official misconduct. And Bill Nicholas publicly corroborated the fact, DeKalb Chief of Police Byrd, DeKalb Police, and Bill Nicholas in fact verbally intimidated and threatened my brother with arrest and false charges of trespass and harassment, including Bill Nicholas filing a false complaint to silence a witness who's been illegally prevented from attending city council meetings, which is information the DeKalb City Council and city attorney are aware and are taking part in covering up and allowing to continue, where Bill Nicholas also intentionally made statements he knew to be false to the public and the press in order to deliberately discredit witnesses and to misrepresent the matter as it relates to me and my family's particular situation. This is clear intimidation that requires an investigation. Subsequently, in a February 2024 post, Alderman Carolyn Morris Zazada made statements she knew to be false as it relates to me and my family's particular situation. While as alderwoman, she also publicly implicated the City of DeKalb and the DeKalb City Council of breaking the law by representing that these matters have been discussed for years, which could have only taken place in secret without public knowledge and our participation. It is in the best interest of everyone involved to have a finding of fact with independent and criminal investigations, which this council and the City of DeKalb are preventing from being conducted or even being called for. The fact is, for instance, Alderman Zazada and the city council are the ones being accused of criminal wrongdoing. It is not good faith to have them continue to deny me and my family independent and criminal investigations, which should have already been provided and should now, without any further hesitation or delay, be called for in good faith. Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item F, appointments. We have public participation
There is no appointment for the vacant city clerk office. City Clerk statute states that an appointment of a new city clerk to serve until the next municipal election, the statute says, shall appoint. The appointment must take place within 60 days of vacancy. In a published news article, Mayor Barnes stated that he's not inclined to appoint a new clerk, which would be contrary to what is in state law. ILCS 6553.125 says, clerk and treasurer, if a vacancy occurs in the office of city clerk or city treasurer, it shall be filled by the mayor with advice and consent of the city council. The person so appointed shall hold office for the unexpired term of the officer elected. The statute goes on to say the appointment must be made within 60 days of the vacancy occurrence. So you have about 49 days left. You manage to start the process with the vacant position of alderman, you need to fill the city clerk position. Doesn't matter if you didn't like what the previous city clerk did. Also, on the topic of appointments, there are no appointments for the Human Relations Commission. How many times I gotta come up here and talk about this? It has been four months since you gutted the HRC, Mr. Mayor. I remind the council that on February 26th, Mayor Barnes stated he would make appointments part of the next council agenda. That meeting was on March 12th. No appointments occurred. For that matter, no appointments occurred at the March 26th meeting or the March 12th meeting. The March 26th meeting, of course, was canceled because the mayor was on vacation. So let the records show that no appointments will be occurring at this meeting either. Your state rep run is done. It's time to get back to doing the job you are paid to do by the taxpayers. Make the appointments. It's in the actual approved meeting minutes that you were going to make appointments at the March 12th meeting. Please be truthful with the people. Thank you.
Let's see. So moving on to agenda item G, consent agenda. One, minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 11th, 2024. Two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 25th, 2024. Accounts payable and payroll through March 25th, 2024 in the amount of $3,633,374.30. Number four, accounts payable and payroll through April 8th, 2024 in the amount of $1,291,088.14. Investment and bank balance summary through February 2024. Year-to-date revenues and expenditures through February 2024. Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, February 2024. Crime Free Housing Bureau report, March 2024. DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation FY 2023 annual report. DeKalb Chamber of Commerce FY 2023 annual report. DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau FY 2023 annual report. And the DeKalb Municipal Ban FY 2023 annual report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zasada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
Consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item H, public hearings. We have none. Moving on to agenda item I, considerations. We have none. And moving on to agenda item J, resolutions. I have to recuse myself because I own a commercial property in the Tiff district, which requires me, according to state statute, to not participate in the conversation for Resolution 2024-030, Resolution 2024-031, and Resolution 2024-032. So I would take a motion to approve Greg Perkins for running the next meeting, or the next three sections of the meeting, or if you want to.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Trying to spread it around a little bit. I have a, well, you can't motion probably to approve your own. I would take a motion.
Still moved.
Perfect. Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. And at this point, I will hand the gavel over to Alderman Perkins. Sorry to surprise you.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, just ask for. Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
You can do it at your work.
Just do roll call.
All right. Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Oh, sorry, what?
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Be nice and take it easy on Greg.
All right. Surprise. Resolution 2024-30, authorizing an architectural improvement, AIP, economic incentive for 235 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $25,000. Hannigan Partners LLC, Bonner and Bonner Art. Can I get a motion to bring it to the floor?
Still moved. Second.
City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. So the next four resolutions, or the first four resolutions, deal with activity within the Tiff district. And the first one, as you mentioned in the title, can you hear me all right? Okay, is concerns a Tiff AIP application by the Bonners who are doing business as Hannigan Partners. If there are any audience tonight and would be happy to answer any questions you may have, there's Alyssa. Thank you. So they bought what used to be known as the Blue Door property in downtown DeKalb and are intent on doing some, and have started doing some remodeling, but have some major remodeling ahead. And I've identified what those pieces are. And in page four of your background, you can see the breakdown by masonry repair. There's exterior lighting and signings. There's HVAC work to be done, honey replacement, replacing the front door and windows and the back door and so forth. And they have qualified in each of these for the 50-50 cost sharing in our AIP program. But another thing that I brought to your attention in the background and for you to know is that, and we'll get to this in the next item, there is a unique situation on their west wall. Like a lot of buildings that were built in the central core of the downtown, 100-plus years ago, they had exterior masonry walls, and many of the buildings that abutted each other had common wall designations of where their property began and ended. So sometimes if it was basically three courses of brick thick, this outer wall, the inner course, or maybe the first two courses were the property on one side, and then the last outer course was the property on the other side. So there was a building next door to them, and that was torn down with city assistance back in the late 2000s, 2008, I believe it was. And it wasn't until later, almost seven years later, that then there was the proposition to create a redevelopment corner by Pappas Development, and that eventually built across all of the property that had been torn down except for about a seven-foot-wide pathway, which, as you know, goes from Lincoln Highway down to Van Buren Plaza. So it happens that the outer wall on the, was now the Bonner building, was through an easement that was struck back in the early 2000s, made into a responsibility in terms of maintenance and repair of the city. In addition, the city wanted to assure that the lighting, and you see some lighting there now if you've been up and down that pathway recently, that there'd be some city control over that lighting, that we'd have the ability to do that, and also provide some camera surveillance just for the security of people going into, not a dark, but a dark, not so light, kind of a comfortable kind of lighting, but not bright lighting. So I bring this up in this context just to let you know, there's other work to be done, and I'd like the council to act on that now. The next item is, concerns the tuck pointing of the exterior wall, which is under the control of the City of DeKalb. We vetted this in many ways, and the family and the Bonners have been very cooperative, and they have a lot of work ahead of them and would like council action tonight, and we support that.
Comments? Alderwoman Larson.
I'm just very supportive of this. That's, to me, like, right in the heart of downtown. And, you know, whatever business is there and having an art studio would be fabulous. But just to have everything in proper physical shape and just how the buildings look, I think I'm proud of this.
Alderwoman Zasada.
Yeah, I too support this. I'm excited to see us take care of the bricks. I think that's really important.
Okay. Can we get a vote?
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2024-031, authorizing an agreement with Weber Construction in the amount of $39,700 for repairs to the city-controlled exterior brick wall at 235 East Lincoln Highway. City manager.
Thank you. Well, I've set the table for this. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion in a second?
Still moved. Still moved. Oh, I don't know who said it. Second.
Motion by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderwoman Zasada. My apologies. Details, details.
Okay. So are we ready? We're ready to go.
I think so.
Thank you. I've already set this up. Andy Rye, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works, requested bids for the exterior wall, exterior brick courses of the wall that we've been talking about. And the lowest responsible bid was that submitted by Weber Construction in the amount of $39,700. It's a substantial amount of tuck pointing, and there's some brick replacement in there as well. And we recommend your approval. This would be work that would go along, coincident with roofing work that's being done and some additional, there's gonna be some additional brickwork by another contractor on the roof working with the roofing contractor.
Any comments? Alderwoman Larson.
I just have a question. So we can use Tiff monies on city-owned property?
Yes. We, you know, we did, we certainly did in the downtown with the reconfiguration of the Lincoln Highway corridor. That was $1.8 million worth. So, and it makes perfect sense to use that. That's what this was dedicated for, which is, in this case, rejuvenation of some downtown business buildings.
Can we get a vote, please?
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2024-32, authorizing an architectural improvement, economic incentive for 118 North Third Street in the amount of $2,982.50. Lauren Woods, dash Crackerjack. Can I get a motion in a second to bring it to the floor?
Still moved.
Second.
Alderman, I mean, Mr. Nicholas. City manager Nicholas.
So a smaller project, but very critical to the life of another downtown business. Crackerjacks was unfortunately hit with a major issue in the plumbing in their basement. It was an emergency repair, and you have a couple pictures in your background just to illustrate just how formidable it was. The building was shut down during the course of this for the better part of a week as well, which led to a loss of business and a loss of revenue, obviously. But what has been applied for here is just focused on the plumbing repairs, and the repairs in this case qualify in that 50-50 flight or tier of AIP funding. So we recommend strongly that you help out. We've done other emergency repairs, and I've highlighted those in the background.
Comments? Alderman Walker.
Yeah, hey, thank you for this one. This is a great lady, great business. Known her for over almost 25 years. And yeah, I would've given her more, but hey, good job. Thank you.
Can we get a vote, please?
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Six I.
One more, Mayor.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Sorry.
Resolution 2024-033, authorizing an architectural improvement, economic incentive for 209 Grove Street in the amount of $23,800. Mike Warfel.
380.
I'm sorry?
23,380.
$23,380, yes. Could I get a motion in a second to bring it to the floor, please?
Still moved.
Second.
City manager.
So this is another substantial gutting and remodeling project. The building, some of you may remember, and there's a much faded sign on the back, called the Wizard Building. I don't know if I ever knew that, but I know it now. called the Wizard Building. I don't know if I ever knew that, but I know it now. And Mr. Warfel has been working with the building department and has been considering several other uses for this rather than a games place. And he's looking now at an office type of use. His original preference was they have some kind of a coffee shop, which might have worked out. But the extraordinary plumbing expense and the restroom expenses to bring it up the code was beyond his means, even at 50%. So he's settled on an office use and he's working that out right now. But we've seen the estimates and we've seen what he intends to do and feel that it meets our guidelines and recommend its approval.
Comments? Alderwoman Larson?
I see where you came from. On the number four resolution, it says $23,380, but then down below it says council approval of $23,800. So what dollar amount are we voting on?
I'm sorry, a typo on my part. It's $23,380.
$380. Just wanted to clarify the vote. Thank you.
Any further comments? Can we get a vote, please?
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution passes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alderman Perkins. Then I'm going to go on to... What is that, 209?
Number five.
I don't know.
Five on page six.
Is it? No, no, no. No, I'm sorry. I have a city council speaker request form that was just given to me and 2024-029. There isn't a 2024-029.
It's number nine, mayor, in resolution.
Oh, number nine? Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got you. It was weird because it's usually in order. I didn't, that's why I got lost in that one. All right, so we're at 12333. So we're on number five, correct? 2024-034? Perfect. All right, I've taken motion to bring resolution 2024-034, approving a package liquor license for Suman Liquors Incorporated, doing business as American Liquors located at 159 West Lincoln Highway. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. This application has been going through the process. If the council approves, then there's a conditional license issued. It has to still go through the state level, but they have otherwise met our minimum requirements in our local code to qualify for a license and we recommend your approval.
City council, any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-034 passes. Number six, resolution 2024-035 approving the regulation of traffic for the purpose of holding a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Illinois Route 38, Lincoln Highway, between First Street and Fourth Street on Sunday, May 5, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. As you can see in the background, this is an event which is expanding and that's a good thing. Downtown merchants have embraced what was sort of piloted last year. And by expansion involves the clothing, closing of, maybe the clothing too. They make the clothing out there. Closing of Lincoln Highway. And I want to thank Andy Rye for volunteering his division actually to be very much involved in this. Obviously, it's like a mini, very mini version of what we do every fall when the Corn Fest is in play in terms of the closing of Lincoln Highway. But among the downtown businesses that have been very much involved in the planning of this are the Willet Flower Company, El Jimador Mexican Grill, and also members of the Citizen Community Enhancement Commission. This year, it's going to be more than just people's kind of strolling between businesses, which was very nice and pleasant, but this year we'll have some local bands in the closed street area, DJ, a lowrider, car show, food trucks, children's area, numerous vendors. Recommend your approval.
All right, city council, questions or comments? Yeah, last year they piloted it from Lincoln Highway to the railroad tracks on 30th Street and it was a huge success. So it is really cool that our merchants are stepping up. I know they're going to have bands, they're going to have dancers. It's just going to be a whole event that'd be really cool to see if over time, the Cinco de Mayo celebration is something that DeKalb and downtown DeKalb is known for. So really, really excited about that. Hearing none or comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Sounds fun. Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-035 passes. Number seven, resolution 2024-036 authorizing the purchase of one combination sewer cleaning hydro excavation vehicle through Brown Equipment in the amount of $575,830. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. We discussed this big piece of equipment when we were going through the water department budget back in November and December. So it is a multi-person, purse, purpose, I'm sorry, vehicle. We've been using a vector for some years now. We know how important it is in doing excavations, particularly those that are around some sensitive underground infrastructure. So we don't have sharp objects and people with shovels taking a chance on whether they're going to hit some wire or gas or something like that. It also saves on the backs of our employees and this being new, we'll have an opportunity through the water fund to continue to do this hydro excavating for a long time with this particular vehicle. And we, just to make sure that we would like what we're getting, we inquired of the two lower bidders if the possibility was there for us to use it for a little while. And they, in this case, the company that we're recommending tonight, the Sewer Cleaning is the name, huh? Basically, it's the name. And it's being sold through Brown Equipment, allowed us to have it for a couple weeks. Fell in love, the guys fell in love with it. It actually works. So we recommend strongly that you approve this. We're within our budget that we had put before you and that you approved back in December.
City council, questions, comments? I had one question. When they were talking about blowing out the storm sewers that get clogged with debris, how do we handle like, because I'm sure bottles and plastic and everything gets caught up in there too. How do we make sure that doesn't get just pushed right into the Kishawaki?
Well, it's a vacuum and...
Oh, it is. Okay. I thought it was a push power. No, okay.
We go both directions.
Okay. All right. So I'm assuming our street department would make sure that, I don't think Andy's here. Are you?
But when you, when you, one of the, one of the vendors worldwide is a company called VacAll. So it really started with some way to like pool, another way that something like this is very valuable on the vacuum side is if you get into an excavation or it's pea gravel, you really can't set it to the side. It just keeps caving in, caving in, caving in. And that leads to the higher risk for the labors that are in a ditch. So that's, that's another key use for it and it's something that we've come to rely on and would hate to do without, frankly.
Yeah, great piece of equipment. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-036 passes. Number eight, resolution 2024-037 authorizing a specialized aviation service operation, SASSO, SASSO agreement and community hangar lease with Illinois Aviation Academy, IAA. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager?
Looking around the audience, is there someone here representing the company? Fair amount of background here. First of all, explaining what a SASSO is, kind of the acronym that's used in airport management and operations. But it's basically a commercial agreement with, in this case, a group that can provide flight, flight instruction, a ground school, minor maintenance of aircraft to start and then there are other things that are provided by this company that's been established since the 90s and working out at DePage Airport in DePage County. But has been very much aware of us and looking to expand out into DeKalb and is aware that we are experiencing growth, corporate and otherwise. And so they were willing to rate, to rent some space in our community hangar and also a small office space in the main terminal building. The rates here are competitive in our direction and we are hopeful that you will support our staff recommendation to approve this.
City council, questions or comments? Yeah, I know quite a few people who have used them. Had nothing but good things to say and a great experience, so they're definitely welcome. Roll call, please, I guess.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-037 passes. Now moving on to number nine, resolution 2024-029, we have some public participation. Usri, I'm going to get the last name wrong, I'm sorry, Katum, but please correct me, but come on up to the microphone. And just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Thank you again for your time and considering what I have to present. I'm just here following up from our meeting back in March to answer any questions or any comments you might have. I've had a meeting with city manager Bill Nicholas about the license that's in question and the restriction we're adding. So I'll open it up for any questions or anything you want to discuss.
We'll have the city manager give a review and then we'll definitely call you back up as questions come up. That's right? All right, cool. Thank you. And then I also have Marcia Krauch, is it?
Hi.
And Marcia, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
You betcha.
I am the owner of White Oak Tech Solutions. I am the building that is directly connected to the 7-Eleven that he is purchasing. I've seen a lot of foot traffic come through there. I don't think it was closed prior to it being closed because of not having enough business. I think it was just they couldn't find employees that could keep it open. There's definitely enough people in the area that would like to see the convenience area and I would also really think it would bring a good asset to our business too with the foot traffic. So just wanted to throw that out there.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. I would take a motion to bring resolution 2024-029 to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zasada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. We had a pretty good full discussion of this back on March 11th and it comes back. And one of the things that's happened in between, Usri mentioned this. We've had a face-to-face with Usri and Mr. Michael Suzie, he and his family are the owner of the building. And one of the pieces that I was directed to raise was, was there some type of a metal road? Was there some type of a hybrid type of layout that would accommodate Usri's more recent interest in having packaged liquor there as opposed to just a convenience store? And so we've come a ways. The most recent concept for what the petitioner is looking to do is in your background and was copied for everybody's review. It started as, as you know, as a proposal to have a, like a deli with a convenience side to it and maybe even a little seating area for tables and chairs and such. I think that was generally well-supported. But then Usri had mentioned, I understand, there's some money in sales of alcohol. And so by mixing that in, created a little bit of a conundrum, which is what we addressed in March, at the March meeting, the first March meeting. And so in the process of working out a revised concept, I couldn't help but notice that there were a number of refrigerated units in the aisles. And of course, they can be used for display of pre-made sandwiches and the like, milk and so forth. That also can be used for the sale of beer. And this was more than just the occasional six-pack that was going to go with a deli product out the door with a customer. And I think now we're, we're in the direction of something else than what was originally portrayed to the council, which got my enthusiasm, frankly. And so in my recommendation here, I'm recommending no change in the packaged liquor sale provisions that had been contemplated as one of the things that could be done at the last meeting. And I'm not recommending the liquor license proposal.
City council, questions or comments? Alderman Perkins?
So as the alderman of that ward, feedback I've gotten has been pretty clear. Everyone is very, very receptive to the thought of a deli or a convenience store. It's equally clear that no one is in favor of another packaged liquor store in that area. I understand the way our codes currently are. It's an either-or proposition. Either you have a packaged liquor license or you don't. So to me, I can't get behind an entire packaged liquor license. If our, if our codes evolved to a way where they can just do something simple, like a couple beers or something, that's a different discussion. But the way it is now, I'm with you. I can't get behind and support this. The people of the fourth ward aren't behind it either.
Alderman Verbic?
I look at a market on North First Street. I look at their floor plan. So trying to figure out a way of, you know, what is fair. And that market on North First Street has groceries, deli, meats and whatnot, and a small carve-out section for alcoholic beverages, beer and wine. I don't know. Is that 10% of their floor space over there? I'm not sure. But what if we discussed a percentage of, maintaining just a percentage of their floor space? Let's say it's 10% or limited to 10%. Offering up still that opportunity to sell a few spirits, but within reason. No, I don't support the packaged liquor store either. We've already got one in your ward down the street. So, but yet the deli idea is welcome. So what, what could be a compromise that would work out for you?
City manager, I don't know if you have response to the 10%, 20%?
We talked that through and so to put maybe a finer point on it, in this drawing, I don't see how there couldn't be the gradual drift toward having this basically devoted, at least all the refrigerated parts, not the frozen parts, obviously, but the refrigerated parts. You could fill them with, with beer overnight and wine. So that's, to get back to Alderman Perkins, that's a different horse than we thought we were going to be dealing with.
And the difference between selling beer and wine only and selling everything, all packaged liquors, is that a different liquor license?
Well, yeah, it's, it's a packaged store is what's, what's, potential for a packaged store is what I see here. And I mentioned this to Usri and it hasn't changed. It's, in fact, right behind the main counter, it says alcohol. I assume that's liquor, shorties or whatever it is. And we have a very fine store right down the block. It's the biggest one in DeKalb.
My clarification, is there a liquor license that specifies beer and wine only?
A package, go ahead.
There are not. There is no. There are way that, the way that we could limit this, like I said, is that the liquor commissioner has the approval of a, could approve what's called a business plan or premises plan.
I know, based off of square footage, but then we talked about the whole enforcement piece.
It's not just the square footage. It could be that you're only, you know, your business plan here is only to sell beer and wine, right? And then, yeah, the enforcement is just like any other liquor enforcement matter. So, but that would be... So, but that would be part of the application, would be a plan that was submitted to the Liquor Commissioner. And that's, you know, it would be something that hopefully we would have seen before, you know, it was considered here today, right?
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments or questions? Alderwoman Larson.
I kind of would follow along with Alderman Verbic, is that I could maybe get behind this if it was beer and wine, that you're, you know, it's part of coming in the deli and having us, you know, grab some sandwiches and a six-pack or whatever to take home. But like a full liquor package store? No. Because I think the one on North First Street, do they even have any cold? I think it started off as like a wine cellar, and it was strictly fancier wines to go with maybe a nice cut of meat or something.
Right, right.
That's the only way I could get behind.
Alderman Walker.
I'm kind of like with the, it's one or the other. Like, well, can I ask some questions?
Yeah, absolutely. You want to come up to the microphone, sir?
So if I can ask you, so, and I know, just be honest with me, because you know the basketball game's on and I'm missing Purdue, so are you trying to make most of your money selling the sandwiches and snacks? Are you trying to make real money selling beer?
No, as I mentioned when I was here at the last meeting, my vision is to open up very much like a former, like a 7-Eleven, but as an independent, you know, business. And, you know, that's verbatim what I addressed the council in my last meeting, so...
So let me ask you this. So would you still want to open your business if you didn't get this liquor license? Do you still think you can make a good living or good money there?
No, the liquor license would help the businesses getting foot traffic to the store, and the proposed layout that I've given here would, in my mind, this shows the areas that are restricted to alcohol sales, because I thought when we discussed it last time, my understanding was you wanted to see exactly where in the store you could potentially carry alcohol, so that if you ever walk into the store, any area where I have designated anything that's not, does not indicate alcohol on there, that alcohol would never be present. And my understanding from the last meeting is that this layout would be on file with the city, so that anytime they can come in and, you know, to address, you know, Bill's concern or question, and you came in and there's a $10 cooler that says juice pop milk, that if there was alcohol beverages, I would be, you know, going against my license.
Comments or questions? Others? Alderwoman Zazada?
I just, I hate to see a business not come together when we have someone who wants to do this. And, I mean, I'm looking at this, I'm trying to zoom in on it on my computer, because it's hard to read, actually. So, so I'm seeing on this floor plan, alcoholic beverages in the middle, some alcoholic beverages behind the counter, and then a beer case on the side. Is that, is that right? Those three spots?
Yeah. Yeah, so in that, where I have it restricted to the main cooler that I have designated as a cold box, that would be where the beer section would be. And then in that aisle, it would only be restricted in that aisle that's marked for where, you know, alcohol, you know, may be present. And then behind the counter, you know, that's the three locations. And, you know, when I was doing this, again, this, as I indicated on here, it's a proposed layout. My vision was, or what Bill and I had discussed, was a restriction for 25% of the floor area. And, and so this was doing sort of a layout where, you know, I would, you know, be, felt that would be well represent that restriction in floor space.
And so...
Sorry.
And so I guess what I'm getting from City Manager is that the sense that you got from walking through there was that this doesn't quite represent it?
As I look at, I can read a plan.
Yeah.
Been at this for a while, and I, I see one, two, three fairly large refrigerated sections, not including the alcohol behind the counter. And it seems to me to exceed 25% or, you know, a minimal. And even though I put in your background, the pictures that show another place, not this place, but another place that is set up to be a convenience store, I see this, nothing would keep you from it, particularly if you just went behind into the storage area and you got six-packs of beer rather than six-packs of pop. It's that simple. We don't have people who can go down there and check it every day. So I don't know how we, you can't, and then what are we gonna do, take them to court? Because I think you had two six-packs over the line, and judge is gonna throw that out of court. So, you know, it's a little bit of the honor system, and it's a little bit of just what practice is. You have employees who, you know, they're told to fill the, when they have more beer in the back, they'll fill it with beer. So I, I'm just saying, this is not what we started with. We're all delighted with the idea of a convenience store, and particularly that deli idea. There's no place, we've got 2,000 people working just a quarter of a mile down the road, and they just, they bring their lunches or they eat, there's something sometimes that the owner or the construction contractor will buy for them, but they don't have the time, except to go to a convenience store and buy sandwiches. They don't have time to sit in a restaurant.
Alderman Perkins.
So, so follow-up on things. So the, the behind the counter space, will that be half pints and little fireball shooters?
So that's reserved for if there's any expensive items or, you know, potentially high-risk items that might, people, you know, might steal.
But will it be half pints and little fireball shooters? I was over in Creston, I'm gassed up over in Creston this week, and sure enough, they had them right there in the front, and I get it. But where I'm going with that is, is currently, the way the licensing is set up, you either have a package license or you don't. There is no room in the current structure for some, for a deli with half pints and fireball shooters behind the counter in the backyard of a school. So, I mean, that's, that's my big heartburn with it, is that even though I understand that, that you're going to limit the scope of things, the fact is, the way the, the structure is right now, you either have a package license or you don't. And if you have a package license, that's a lucrative side of business, you know, that's, that we're counting on, a control mechanism where we have limited resources that pushes it to the Liquor Commissioner. You know, so I understand your business model, I get that and welcome. Love the thought of the convenience store and of the deli. But going down this path and essentially overturning all the precedent that we have established within the community, that's, that's my big sticking point. Again, love the deli, love the convenience store, even, even a few beers and some wine, I'm 100, behind it 100%.
And point of clarification from me before I call him, Alderman Walker, all of our liquor licenses, including the one on First Street, is a full package liquor license. They're just choosing to sell only some wine, essentially, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a beer and wine liquor classification. We don't create that as an amendment to our code.
I understand, yeah. Yeah, it's another, and our liquor code is already...
Exactly.
So there's no precedence out there of submit a business plan to the Liquor Commissioner that says X, Y, or Z. We've never done that.
Yeah, it could, it could surely, it can be done under our code.
Yeah, I understand. But it hasn't been done, is my question.
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay. Alderman Walker.
Yeah, see, I'm kind of with Alderperson Zazada with this, because we don't really want to turn away businesses, because that 4th Street kind of looks like a ghost town. You know, it's like we're neglecting it. However, we do just have a liquor store right down the street, and we have a school, you know, just on the other side of the building. So I guess this is the first time I'm speechless. I'm just not, you know, because do we really want to turn away a business, since everybody else likes to come to DeKalb, you know? Do we, you know, want to make people jump through hoops and bounds just to get a business here? However, you do have to understand where we're coming from. And, you know, with Alderperson Perkins, you know, it's his ward, and his constituents is, you know, telling him that they do not want another liquor store in the area, if that's what it solely is going to end up, you know? So, you know, it's just, ah, you know, this, how can we meet in the middle? Is there a way, Mayor Barnes, we can meet in the middle on that? Or...
I think the, the meet in the middle piece, though, is we'd be moving into, and not that I'm scared to move into unprecedented territories, but it is, if we had them submit a business plan specifically stating X, Y, or Z, it is the enforcement piece. We don't have the manpower for it. If we did, City Manager's right, then we could come and say, hey, you're not supposed to do this. They could fight, appeal, courts, and it's just something that we don't have. And then on top of two liquor stores close together, like Annie Glen North is a perfect example, with the two liquor stores next to each other. I've, I've heard about that since day one. How could we ever let something like that happen? To have two liquor stores side by side in that case. This is two liquor stores, maybe not a stone's throw, but if you got a good arm, it's kind of a stone's throw from each other. And then we've got a liquor store that literally the adjacent property is a school. Now, it's not a school building, I understand. They're far enough, according to our code, from the actual building itself, but the property is adjacent right there, and that means all those kids go by the liquor store, whether it's coming from Huntley Middle School, I was thinking the old high school, Huntley Middle School, or Founder's Elementary School. All those are the considerations that we're hearing about from Alderman Walker. I think Alderwoman Zazada beat you, or no?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it is really challenging, and like he said, we don't want to turn anyone away. However, I did bring up specifically at the last meeting, our, the structural design that we created by not allowing alcohol at gas stations at other places, because, you know, that is part of the challenge. So if we do afford you this opportunity, why wouldn't every other gas station want the same thing?
They will.
What, and so that is part, and I don't mean to...
They've already been honest about, they want this, yeah.
Right, and I, so I don't mean to argue the slippery slope argument, because it's not that straightforward, but nonetheless, the design creates, the design in our code creates it so that we have only liquor stores. And so when we change that, we really harm those businesses, because we already designed it so they could have the corner on that market. But really, it was to protect students and to protect our community and, and to just make it less accessible, I believe. And so I understand that we already did that, and it's kind of, we made this special, unique, weird market. And if we change it, we affect all of the other businesses that already exist. And so then we're in a position where we really should be accommodating every business. It's sort of unfair at that point, and, you know, and I want your business to go there, and I want your business to do business, but that's the struggle.
I may just, just add one.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
So just, the total square footage of the store is 2,500 square feet, which includes the, you know, storage area. As far as the sales floor of the space, the restriction that you have before you is less than 25% of the floor area. And given the other liquor stores that are present in DeKalb, that would be very hard pressed to be able to compete with, you know, stores that are 10,000 square feet plus, you know, including the one down the street that Twin Liquors. If my only business is gonna come from the liquor side, and I'd be shooting myself in the foot to come here before you and ask for, you know, a license and a layout that would restrict me to 25% of already a small store. If I was looking to open a purely liquor store in DeKalb, there's no way I think you can compete with a store that small. And, you know, and besides that, I think with all the other liquor stores in DeKalb that you go into, you know, you're seeing 80, 90% plus of the floor space being used for alcohol sales.
So here's, here's, we talk about the complexity that what you just stated would probably be, if I had to guess, the size of the coolers and the size of the shelf there, but it's also the floor space. So according to your calculation, we'd have to remove all the floor space from there to actually calculate the coolers and the shelves, what that floor space is, to see if your alcohol is 25%. When I look at it, if I'm just looking at the shelves and the coolers and things like that, the section for alcohol is larger than 25%. And this is the problem we'd have to get into. What defines 25%? Do you count the bathrooms? Do you count the entryway? Do you count, and that, that's where, I see this as, do we want a liquor store on the corner or not? Because that's, that's the way our liquor license is. That's the way we've issued every other liquor license to every other business in our community, and that's what's actually before us. Do we want a packaged liquor store on the corner or not? Alderman Larson.
Well, and this might be opening another whole can of worms that we're not gonna discuss today, but it comes down to, there's so many things that a lot of places that sell packaged liquors, like you said, you go and right there as you're checking out, or all the single, it's a shot of alcohol right there. And I know some people might bring them home and make drinks. I worry that a lot of people are going back to work and just drinking that to get through the afternoon. And when you go in and it's like people are buying a big, one can of beer, that's like half a gallon, and you're telling me they're taking that home, they're popping it as they're driving home. And any of these, what I would call, single servings that we currently have, that's what really bothers me about this. If it was, if you would say that all you're having is actually large packages, the smallest is a six-pack of beer and a bottle of wine, I might be on this. But the minute you tell me that you're gonna have the single servings of anything, I'm out.
But that's where, that's where in that, that situation where we would have to dictate the business plan, we'd have to enforce, we'd have to check on. And that's where I think this conversation ultimately is, do we want a packaged liquor store on that corner or not? There happens to be a deli and all that other stuff with it, but the way our code is and the way we've issued every liquor license so far, it's, it's that. So that, Alderman Walker.
Hey, can I entice you to, you know, visualize this? We have a lot of good businesses going in there. We have Facebook, you know, we have Heinz Craft, you know, 2025. Can you imagine all the people that would come to your place for lunch and go back to those places? So do you really need the liquor store in order to make this happen? Just think about it. Like, I mean, I know it sounds good, you could sell liquor and do all that, but just think about if you could open it without the liquor license and just, you know, you have snacks in a big deli there, I'm telling you, man. I'm a UPS guy, that would be the hangout spot for us. So I'm just saying, you know, if this doesn't work for you, just think about that. I mean, because I don't want to turn businesses away. It's like it's not going your way. I just don't want to turn you away. I really want you to think about it. Just think about the main scope of things. We have all those businesses over in that area, and it's just gonna keep growing. So I just really want you to think about that. I don't know if people told you about that, but that could be a nice little lunch spot for a lot of people, so that's all I just want to throw out there.
And I appreciate those words, certainly, and, you know, I want to say, I know in that area of town, it's, it's definitely, in its current state, it is on the quieter side, and that's, you know, I'm just looking for additional pull to draw people in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Totally understandable, yep. Any other comments or questions, or I'm gonna call roll? All right, roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Yeah, come on up.
First of all, again, my name is Steve Michaels, my mom is here Elizabeth Michaels, we're the property owners. I do want to be absolutely clear, I know I mentioned this in the last meeting, everyone I've discussed about, you know, filling that location, whether it be a tenant to rent it, or someone to buy it, has always brought up, I need a liquor license. I mean, I've talked to numerous people. Usri came out with a plan that I thought met code, less than 25%. I know what you said about how can we enforce that. But if, if we don't move on with this, my, my feeling is that place is gonna remain vacant, because it's gonna be very hard for me to find someone to fill it. I've been trying to for the last 18 to 24 months, and I have not been successful until I ran into Usri and he prevent, provided his vision and how we were gonna come here and try to support that and get that over the goal line. So I just, I think that it's gonna be a big challenge. Okay?
Yep. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada? Larson?
No.
Smith?
No.
No.
Perkins?
No.
Verbic?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
No.
Two I.
All right, so ordinance 2024-012 fails. Sorry about that. I really do think, like Alderman Walker talked, a deli there is going to crush it.
Wow, you finally supported me.
I always have supported you, man.
Appreciate it.
100%.
Appreciate the work.
Alderman, not Alderman Walker, deli there, I mean, when you look at the restaurant, the Pancake House is there, does really well. That place is going to be the place for having a restaurant at some point. And I say a restaurant, I mean a deli. So, I really hope you still continue to think about pursuing your business there. But thank you, guys. All right, moving on to, oh, yeah, ordinance, sorry, Agenda Item K, ordinance's second reading. We have number one, ordinance 2024-012 amending Chapter 67 Body Art Establishments Tattooing, Section 67.O3 Qualifications for Body Art Establishment License, Section 67.05, Public Hearing on An Application For Body Art Establishment License, and Section 67.06 Issuance Of A Body Art Establishment License. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As the, the brief background points out, brought this forward from the discussion back on 26th of February. Council was specific about some things they wanted to see. One was that there was an odd public hearing requirement in this that isn't extant and other similar matters, so the removal of that does not remove any opportunities for the owner or for the city to, to pursue further discussion about things. Increases the allowable number of body art establishments in our downtown area from three to four. Reduces the minimum distance between body art establishments in the downtown area from 500 to 125 feet, so it's consistent with support of this particular proposal, which is what the council had identified. But there is also the caveat that the council asked for, which is, in the event that one of the four, if you approve this, four currently licensed body art establishments in the downtown area closes, then the cap on such licenses returns to three.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-012 passes on second reading. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2024-014 amending Chapter 50, oh, no, we already, we moved that from the agenda. So, moving on to ordinance's L first reading, number one, ordinance 2024-020, approving a final plot of the Stockman Re-subdivision to combine Lot 17 and Lot 18 in the Woodlawn Acres Subdivision, 802 Woodlawn Drive, Louis and Rachel Stockman. Give me one sec here, I just want to make sure. All right, can I have a motion to bring it to the floor, please? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager?
This is a minor re-subdivision, as you can see from the background. The applicants are Rachel and Louis Stockman, who are looking to expand their, their home. There is a lot, a vacant lot available at 901 Sycamore Road. It used to have a detached, single-family home with access directly from Sycamore Road, and you can still see that access point. And this, we, first of all, we support this re-subdivision, but the city engineer proposed, and the applicants agreed, that the access from Sycamore Road would be discontinued. It's, it was in a turn lane, and it was always, for the beginning of the turn lane, it was always a bit of a problem, if somebody was slowing to pull in there, it could create a hazard on any given day, so.
City Council, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-020 passes on first reading, I take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
Ordinance 2024-020, second reading has been waived. Moving on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember Reports. Alderman Smith, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I want to give a shout-out to Andy Ray and his crew, you know, they stepped up when nobody else would and helped out, you know, a family in the 7th Ward, so shout-out to Andy, doing a good job, boss.
Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Perkins?
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to go back to the very first thing that we talked, that we discussed this evening, and that's recognition of the middle schoolers. You know, in this age of bracketology, which is concluding tonight, can, can you imagine winning your bracket and not having a single champion? So, what this is, is a big thanks and congratulations to those guys, because they won a state title, but her highest finisher was a second-place finisher. And I think what that goes to is just that organization, the commitment of those coaches, those families. I've had boys that have gone through the wrestling program, and the commitment that those guys have had for years. I'm sure, I'm sure I'm going to forget someone, but Weller, Mack, and Kylie, they've been doing this for a long time. And to have this many state qualifiers and to win it with that many state qualifiers, that's a tough path. So, thank, thank you, families and coaches, for that commitment. Awesome work.
Alderman Larson?
I just want to do a shout-out to the County Visitors Bureau, and the, the amount of different athletic events, and social events, and conventions that they've been bringing in to the county and, and the city of DeKalb. And when I start looking at our monthly, like, taxes on the motels, I mean, it's just skyrocketing, you know, month to month. And a lot of that is the work they do to bring things to, to our neighborhood. So, I want to thank them for that.
Alderman Zazada?
No report.
Yeah, so, one, I, I, I think everyone here either went to the visitation, the funeral, or got to see the procession of our deputy sheriff, the honor that she was given for losing her life on duty was, I mean, it, it was incredible. I think, I was there at 10:15 in the morning, 15 minutes after the doors opened, but there was 1,000 people lined up, going through, paying their respects. Seeing the fire department with the ladder trucks out and the flag was really cool. Police showed up in force, and the state police was there. You know, the towing companies were out, RP Lumber was out, there were American flags, people were on the streets, just honoring her memory and her service. I, I heard from people all over, it was one of the most impactful things they had seen. And for me, it's just incredible to see a community come out and support a family. She had young children, and it was, it was quite literally heartwarming, just to, to see our community rally around someone who, you know, gave their life serving. So, that, that was, that was incredible, and I just want to thank our city staff. I think we probably had every vehicle, snowplow, lawnmower, you name it, out, blocking the streets so that procession could proceed to the funeral home uninterrupted. So, it was, it was one of the coolest things I've, I've had the honor to see in this community. So, thanks, Andy, I know your team was a big part of it, Chief Thomas, Chief Byrd. It was really cool for all of us to take that moment and make sure that we send someone off in, in the right way. So, really appreciate it. I also want to say, Ward 5 resumes are in, the deadline was last Friday at 5:00. I'm not going to give a date on when I'm going to make a decision. I know what the state statute is, and I know when we have to have that, but I'm reviewing resumes right now, and we'll have a recommendation to council soon, in time for meeting the deadline of state statute on that. But it is great, we have eight people that apply. So, we've got a pretty good pool of candidates, which is wonderful. Some people I had to remind them they don't live in the 5th Ward. But the eight that I have all reside in the 5th Ward, which is great. But it was, the enthusiasm was awesome, you know. Safe Passage, I was also at a check giving ceremony from Congresswoman Lauren Underwood on Thursday. She procured $2.5 million in federal dollars to donate to Safe Passage for their building. That really closed a significant gap for them. So, it was really great to have our US Congresswoman continuing to make DeKalb a priority, and bringing in a seven-figure check was just absolutely incredible. Also, I got to go with Egg Toys, to Egg Toy Studios with Scott Zach and our Chair of our Enhancement Commission. They're the ones that bought the First United Methodist Church, really cool. Actually, beyond cool, if you have a chance to ever tour their studio, oh, my God. I, I mean, where they're at right now must be 100,000 square foot, Zach, I don't even know, it's massive. And the United Methodist, First United Methodist Church that they own now is going to be a continuation, expansion for them. That's how massive this organization is. So, having them come to DeKalb is going to be phenomenal, and they're working with us on some public art in the community, which is really cool. And that's part of the Enhancement Commission is driving that. But other than that, that's all I got. City Manager?
No report.
All right. So, moving on to Agenda Item N, Executive Session. I would take a motion to move the executive session to approve, or sorry, I need a motion for approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss, number one, workers' compensation as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C12; number two, executive session minutes as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C21; and number three, purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C5. Can I have a motion to move in an executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Verbic. All right, we are moving, what? Oh, roll call, sorry.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, so our regular agenda, our regular meeting has been in recess now, as we move to a closed session. So, all of you, thank you for coming out tonight, you just can't stay here.